Good evening. How's it been going? Okay. Hi, everybody.
That's what's on. That's on my screen.
So, welcome to our open public budget hearing for the Milton School Committee. We'll be discussing our FY25 budget. We will have this public hearing. Once this part concludes, we will adjourn and then call to order a regular Milton School Committee meeting for this evening. So, Dr. Pavlicek will hand it right over to you.
Okay.
I guess just to clarify, we're going to begin with a very short kind of overview of our budget presentation, which has been presented before. And then after that part, we will have the opportunity for members of the community to share comments.
I'm just trying to get this to share properly. There we are. So this is the budget presentation you've seen before. The goal, of course, is to provide students with a highly personalized development appropriate learning experience. This is our goal from our strategic plan. The strategic plan emphasized the three pillars of learning: personalized learning, safe and supportive schools, equity in learning. So again, not to read it. It's reflective of the strategic plan. And so, our chart is to really get students ready for college and career. Just was asked some of the accomplishments of the last year. A new math and social studies curriculum with embedded differentiation. Analyzing student data as a team, district, school, grade levels. Planning instruction together. So we've done a lot with personalized learning. In the safe and supportive schools pillar, we have SEL leads in each building now. Working on trauma-informed practices. We're continuing with the calm classroom. And we've received an $83,000 grant for safe and supportive schools. And of course, in the equity in learning, we've targeted IDEA funds to address some of the disproportionality in the district. We've secured a grant from the Nellie May Foundation to help this work. And we were awarded a mass DESI grant to recruit a diverse teaching force. So on to the actual budget itself. Our assumptions were, for the level service budget, that we will continue to do everything next year that we're doing now. Whether it was ESAR-funded, ARPA-funded, or whatever, we are going to roll the existing operation over into fiscal 25. And so, the budget just includes no additional staff. It includes the contractual obligations. And as I said, rolled all the ESAR and ARPA positions into the general fund. Those positions, there were a few of them. Preschool coordinator was partially funded by ARPA. Our kindergarten aides, which had been .8 FTEs in the past, were elevated to full-time with the difference being funded by ARPA. We had added a team chair for students who were on the 504 plans. We added 1.8 equivalent nurses, a middle school adjustment counselor, an extra elementary math interventionist, high school math teacher, a high school sped teacher, two board-certified behavioral analysts, and in just the last few weeks, an additional school bus. All of these were funded by one of the grants. And the underlying assumption is they'll all be continued next year. With that, our current general fund budget is $61.5 million. We had a million-one in ARPA and ESAR positions for a total of $62.7 million. The cost to roll that over is, we judge to be $66.9 million. That's an increase of $4.2 million, but to the general fund, it's an increase of $5.4 million because you have to pick up all the ARPA and ESAR funding that is going away after this year. So while it's a 6.8% increase, which is significant, to the general fund, it turns out to be an 8.8% increase. Why 6.8%? Two pieces. Of that $4.5 million, $4.25 million, $3.05 million is salary and staff, which is 5.8%. And basically, $3 million is non-salary cost. And those are both significant percentages, so we have to dive into those. On the salary line, really comes from a couple of places. The special education instructional assistance are up. We have a lot more needs in the special education area. We had 94 FTEs of these aides last year. We have 104 currently. Actually, 104, probably have 110 currently now, when this was written. The total salary for instructional assistance is about $4 million. And IDEA funds used to cover this, but IDEA funds have remained constant at about $1.3 million for the last 10 years or more. So while you have a lot more need in special education, causing us to have a lot more instructional assistance, any increase in cost in instructional assistance actually looks larger because you have the flat grant funding underneath it. So I mean, if you raised your cost by 5%, it would appear to be raising by 6% or 7% because the federal support is not keeping up. But once you back out those extra special education instructional assistance, everything else in our staff lines works out to a 4.5% increase. They got a 2.5% COLA this year. Steps and lanes always run between 2% and 2.25%. So a 4.5% increase is exactly what we would expect year over year. So the difference really was the need for the extra special education assistance. And the non-salary increase, again, the non-salary number is much smaller, but it's a larger percent. And primarily, it is out-of-district costs in special education. State approved a 16% raise. We've increased in tuitions. We talked about this. And that actually was approved after the fiscal '24 budget was set. So while it caused a hole in the fiscal '24 budget, to compensate for it in the fiscal '25 budget, it appears to be almost twice the cost because we have to actually make up what was not funded in '24 as well as what needs to be funded in '25. So that's, we had about a $5 million budget, little over $5 million in out-of-district tuitions. This kicked us up to nearly 6. So it's a large increase. Another issue was the athletic budget, which has been seriously underfunded for several years. And we tried to make a correction on it to bring it more in line with what the actual expenditures are year over year, which was $80,000. Part of it is successive teams going to tournaments and so forth costs money. And the additional school bus, which was added this year, $90,000. Well, that's $90,000 in the non-salary lines that we have to pick up for next year. If you back those three things out, everything else in our non-salary lines is 2.2% increase, which again, would be what you would expect, more or less. No one on earth can read this, but we've posted. This is the per pupil spending comparisons for, as of last weekend, the 2023 preliminary reporting came out. So this is reasonably new. This is about 10 days old. You can see for the last several years, Milton has been about the 25th percentile in funding per pupil basis. Based on this partial, we're sitting at about 30th percentile, but not all the results are in yet, so it's not clear. That'll move a little bit one way or another. But in any case, our per pupil spending is definitely on the lower end of the spectrum. And as been previously pointed out, our results are certainly not down there. Just from a couple of weeks ago, the last week, the town's financial picture was that at that point, based on the town administrator's budget, we would be able to fund the level service budgets for all town departments. But that is it currently. At the moment, there is no additional funding for anything beyond level service in the current revenue projections, at least. That being said, it still is important to state what the needs are that we talked about, what our needs-based request was and is. And so, we went with the approach of looking at systemic initiatives rather than just hitting isolated issues with...
Just to add to, just as you start the needs-based budget, I'll be talking later about the work we did with the staff yesterday, the work we're doing with the priority report and implementation plan to make plans for next year. A lot of that work rests on the ability to have staffing to carry out a lot of the systems work that we're doing. So the more that we're able, for this budget, I think, the more that we're able to fund at least a few of these positions. If that was possible, it would be very helpful in terms of being able to, as we're designing this spring, to be able to think about and move especially around special ed and around kind of some of the other kind of foundational structural things around multi-tiered systems of support. Having a few positions there would make that work smoother and would not delay maybe some of the things. Because when we don't get the positions we need, sometimes we have to shoestring a little bit together to make things work. So anyway, just wanted to add that as you kind of go through this list.
So, the needs-based budget that we requested were some steps towards making some progress along some of the redesigned areas. And as was just mentioned, one of those is establishment of a multi-tiered system of supports to help address some of the learning loss and social-emotional issues reflected over the last few years. The English language learning leadership. Now that we have a larger number of English language learners, we need more administrative support in those areas. Our nursing has been an issue in driving because we have more and more medically compromised students. And the enrollment bubble of the elementary schools is now rolling its way up into middle and high school, and we're seeing its effects there. So from those drivers, we looked at a few things. We're looking for two additional FTEs of reading interventionists at the elementary level. Because while we address, you know, reading at the lowest levels, at the primary levels, once you get past grade three, I mean, that's when concentration is grades one, two, three, we really need to address some of the issues still that linger into grades four and five. That's a scary thought. It looked like my internet went out there for a second. We had, in the world of SEL, we were looking at adding adjustment counselors to FTEs at the elementaries, half of an FTE at the middle and one at the high school. And as noted, currently, we have one adjustment counselor at each elementary school, two-and-a-half at the middle, and three at the high. The national recommendation is one for every 250 students. This doesn't get us there, but it gets us closer. And you can tell at the elementary schools, we're one for 500 to 600 students. The middle, the extra half of the high school, at the middle school, will bring us to about 100 to 350 students. And the extra one at the high school will be one to about 250 students. So that brings us better in line, at least at middle and high. We're looking in special education at some efficiencies. We'd like to get some administrative assistance to take over scheduling and other duties. I mean, we had a request today for copies of a student's special education file, which runs 500, 600 pages. We don't need to have staff, professional staff, making copies of 500 or 600-page documents to send out to families at schools and so forth. That should be an administrative assistant. We shouldn't be, you know, paying faculty salaries to do that. So this would free up particularly our team chairs to meet more of the deadlines that they have and would allow them to do more of the academic evaluations and so forth that we currently have to contract out. It's always, you know, by this, we would be basically trading the cost of administrative assistance for the cost of contracting out additional services. So basically, this would be revenue neutral. And again, the secondary evaluator psychologist, we want to add another psychologist. They are hard to find, I will admit that. We often have trouble finding educational psychologists. But the fact that we do not have enough currently means we are contracting these services out again. So again, it's always more cost-effective and better for the students to perform it in-house on these rather than contracting out. So those two items actually in special ed won't require additional money, so we are, you know, looking at those as first steps where we can do this without spending extra money. Certainly intend to do it. The EL program development, we went from, you know, 76 students five years ago to 130 now, so 70% increase. The need was cited in our current tiered focus review, and we need an ELL lead, given that we have crossed the magic barrier of 100 students. This could be, it's not specified by DESI exactly what form this could take. It doesn't have to be administrator. It could be a Unit A person who assumes that responsibility. So we would have to look at the best way to implement that. But we do need someone who's dedicated, at least on a, you know, could be a half-time provider and a half-time administrator to handle much of the ELL oversight. We had asked for a librarian. We currently have one librarian at the elementary school for 2,200 students. Hardly seems enough. So the students, you know, have a librarian on one week, but then they'll have an aide doing book exchange on the alternate week. And the library isn't used every day because the librarian is in two schools one week and the other two schools the other week. So it's not sufficient support. Nursing, we mentioned it earlier on, we had 1.8 FTEs of nurses that were funded by ARPA funds. We have currently one nurse at each school, plus a head nurse, plus from ARPA, one floating nurse and two two-day-a-week nurses. We would like to take those two two-day-a-week nurses and make it a full-time position, so we have that extra day of nursing support. So that's why this is a .2 FTE. Again, bring us closer to the recommendation of a number of nurses. At the secondary level, we were looking at, as I mentioned earlier, the bubble moving up. The current eighth grade is being supplanted by a sixth grade that is considerably larger. Even taking into account the normal loss of students from grades five to grade six, based on a comparison of this year's grade five with the prior year's grade five, we do expect an increase in students, possibly on the order of 70 students at Pierce as a result of this cross. That's a lot. What's happened over the last couple of years, this past year, some of the eighth-grade core teachers, because the size is a little smaller, were able to offer some exploratory courses. That wouldn't be able to happen as we move a larger eighth grade up. So that's a discussion that we've actually been having, with the principle there as to how best to deal with that. For instance, in the eventuality that we get a level service budget and this doesn't happen. All of these have, the discussions are underway of what if, not, you know, and what are the ramifications for various positions. But this is one that's going to be problematic and that we really are starting to look at now. At the high school, particularly the career tech department, we have a lot more requests for electives in certain areas than we are able to fulfill. At Pierce, and we'd like to say the difference between Pierce and the high schools, Pierce are exploratories and high school are electives. The high school, you indicate a preference for what you want for your elective course, and we try to do it. In this case, there were a lot of sections that we could have offered had we had the staff, but instead had to fit these students into something else. At Pierce, the exploratories are, you have two other courses. Let's see what fits in your schedule. I mean, it's much more, there's much more choice involved at Pierce. The high school, we really tried to give the students, older students, more choice, but to the extent that we're unable to do so, we look at all the courses that we could have run or due to interest, but it could not due to staff. And so, all of these sections have students who took something else instead. And PE Health, we also, is the other department that has large sections. In PE, you don't think of it as being much of an issue in the gym, but when they're in the health classroom and you start running above 30 kids in a classroom, it gets harder. We mentioned also administrative needs. Currently, we have an assistant superintendent whose job is curriculum instruction and HR management, which is really a two-headed position. Those are very different skills generally. And for years, they have been sort of combined into one. But we really need at this point with, well, once you start counting community schools, 700, 750 employees, and we don't have an HR director, that's a problem. Because the town, while the town offers certain benefits and so forth, we do all the front work to put them into the systems and things like that. We're doing all the hiring. There's a lot. And there's, you know, we're talking today, you know, people, whose license is up this year, who's under non-professional status, who's, all the various different things we talk about at various points in the year are a lot. And if your job is to do curriculum instruction on top of that, it's very long. So we would look at it as more of an administrative, a non-union administrative position, not necessarily, you know, assistant superintendent level position anymore or something like that. But we just need a professional to really handle HR. And we would look at increasing our communications director from a full-time to a half-time to a full-time. This is one of the things that came out when you talk about the priority report. Communication is a huge issue all around, whether it's the website, whether it's how you communicate to parents, how do you communicate to the community. Our systems work. I won't say they're state-of-the-art, but it's, the expectations, shall we say, are state-of-the-art. And we're not there yet. So we need to do something along those lines. And of course, space, which we have talked about seemingly infinitely. The good news on this is, of course, the current capital bonding proposal for the town budget for next year does include the money to do some renovations at Cunningham and hopefully open up some more space. So there's the good news in this. This one is on the table. The net effect of all of that was the add-on for the needs base was roughly $1 million, just over $1 million, to fund all of those things. Again, those were our pared-down needs, to the extent that, you know, there are any improvements in state aid or any adjustments in the revenue stream coming in between now and town meeting, it would certainly help to make a little dent in some of this, should that money become available. I think the possibility of enough money becoming available to fund some of the town's needs and $1 million of our needs is nil. But there may be something there, and there usually is some movement between now and town meeting in terms of budget projections and so forth and state aid. So we keep these on the table. We'll look at what we can do with what, if any, becomes available between now and then. But we put them out there as this is our, these are our needs. These are our top priority needs, and people need to know what those are. So would that be funded? The total ask that's actually in the back of, or will be in the back of, the warrant is the full needs-based budget of $68 million and change. So that's where that number comes from that will appear in that table nine in the back of the warrant that everyone reads so closely. So that is the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Pavlicek. So at this time, this is our public hearing, so we will open it up for any members of the community who have joined us to share a perspective on this budget as presented. It looks like we have one participant in person. This is a hybrid meeting, so we may have people online. I think maybe Mr. Funling will invite you to speak first, and then if we have folks online who would be interested to speak, it might be good if you could please raise your hand so that we can know that you're interested in sharing comments with us. As with our citizens speak, per policy, we ask you to introduce yourself and keep your comments to three minutes. And thank you for joining us.
Thank you. My name is Jay Funling. I live at 39 Seius Lane. So I understand that the budget for this year is not as large as you had hoped for. It's also not what I had hoped for. I will have two children in the high school next year who will be affected by the lack of the new proposed teachers. Unfortunately, I agree with Dr. Pavlicek, I don't think this budget problem can be fixed this year. So I urge you as a committee to put your support behind a comprehensive process to prepare for a possible override next year. This town has long-term needs in schools, public safety, roads, the library, the senior center, consolidated facilities, capital expenses, employee benefits, stabilization funds. I'm out of fingers. You get the point. There are a lot of moving pieces in the town's budget. When and if we ask the voters to raise their own taxes, that request should come with a comprehensive plan to address all these needs. That plan will not come together in a couple of weeks. In fact, if we want to have an override, if we may have an override 16 months from now, we need to start the budget planning as soon as possible. This planning task should not fall to select board. They have a lot on their plate. It should not be entirely on our town administrator. He has even more on his plate. There should be a group focused on this and only this. I've asked the select board to establish a sustainable budget task force as soon as possible. Hingham and Arlington are two examples of towns that have had something similar to great success in recent years. So please join me in urging the select board to establish a committee at their earliest opportunity so we can see a path to appropriate funding for the schools and the budget process next year.
Thank you. Are there any people online who wish to speak?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, we'll just give a few more seconds in case anyone online intends to participate by speaking at our hearing. Okay, still see no hands raised. So with that, we will conclude the public comment portion of the hearing, and we can sort of hear whatever comments any of our members may wish to share. Just a reminder, as with citizen speak, we don't directly respond to the members of the community who have shared their perspectives with us, but you can direct those comments to the chair in the context of a conversation now, if you wish. And I'll just, I mean, Beverly, you're our finance chair, is there anything you would like to add to the presentation or anybody else?
Well, I think the most important, well, in this moment, I want to thank Dr. Pavlicek and Dr. Burrows for taking the time to provide context for our budget, revisiting the pillars of our strategic plan. We took an opportunity to celebrate some of the accomplishments for the investments that were made this last school year, and we also had the opportunity to share where we still need to grow. We've been very fortunate to have several meetings with the warrant committee where we had the opportunity to share our needs-based budget as well as our level service budget, and they've expressed support for both, the need to cover our operating costs as well as the need to invest in a new building and linking the two to each other. We can't do one without the other because they're equally important. And I do look forward to working with the select board and the town administrator to see what can be done this school year. But it does take an entire community to recognize our needs and, as we've said all school year long, or fiscal year long, that it's a decision that a community makes. And we will make investments together, and we will accept what we can accomplish with the investments that are made. But I really appreciate the effort and the insights and the confidence in which all of you have placed in the people that we've hired to come up with a plan that we think makes sense. And I appreciate Dr. Burrows' leadership in terms of taking those pillars, listening to our community members, whether they're in school or out of school, to create what is now the implementation portion of our strategic plan. And I look forward to the day where we can fully fund it so we can achieve the accomplishments that that plan has, aspires to. So just want to thank you all. It's been a pleasure serving with you, and this is my last budget. I know this brings tears to my eyes.
So I do have just a clarification question. Are we saying that there's no opportunity to kind of revisit like the needs-based budget in terms of getting an override? Is that what?
No, what we're saying is, he just presented the budget. That our only goal is to present the level service and the needs base. That's our only obligation. It's in the hands of the warrant committee to make a recommendation. That's why I'm so pleased they've been supportive. And there are meetings on the 13th with us, and Glenn will be presenting again. I hope any of you around the table can join him because we usually get a lot of questions. Glenn is very adept at responding, but every once in a while, we can give that rah-rah cheer. But this is, this is literally our only obligation tonight. So I appreciate those in the audience who did come to share their feedback.
I begin, appreciate the presentation, the clarity with which you kind of put this within the framing. I think we've talked about this for a while. Disappointed, I completely hear the point made in public comments, very much agree with the point made in public comment that like having a more holistic approach to our budgeting long-term makes sense is something we should be doing a better job of. We know how tight finances are within the town in terms of revenue streams, given our lack of commercial base, that's something that's well discussed. So I think all of those are good ideas. You know, I still wrestle with the impact that this has on kids of us not fully funding the things that we know our kids need, not in 16 months, but they need it now, they needed it last year, they certainly will need it next year. That doesn't change the fact that the budget kind of, it's somewhat out of our control. And so, you know, from a locus of control perspective, we need to focus on what we can. Certainly hope that between now and wherever the budget is voted on by the town meeting, that, you know, if there's ability for the warrant committee or the town administrator or the select board or any of those folks to continue to look at our projections, our revenue income, how we're budgeting in other areas, that would identify funds to allow us to address at least some of these priorities. I don't think I'm under any real, any assumption that we're going to be able to get the full kind of 1.042 million that we were hoping for, but certainly something still has an impact on kids. And so I know y'all have thought about if we got, how we would prioritize within that list of priorities, so I'm sure we can put it into really good use and have good impact to support the priority report issue laid out. So certainly hope that is, that is heard and that work is done if it is possible. But appreciate the, just the framing around the budget process within our priorities as a district and the needs y'all, you have seen and kind of put time into finding. So thank you again for your time and your time, Glenn, and it is also your last budget with us.
Oh, don't say that. You're jinxing. But just to add on to what member Loring was saying, you know, it's, in the past, if the select board does identify resources, they have been known to add positions, we added a bus. So I think it's a matter of where we land fiscally, the state level, what happens locally. So it's not over until it's over, but literally, our only obligation tonight was, was to present. So I'm still optimistic that between the warrant committee's support and the select board, that we can make the investments that are necessary to support our schools.
The only other thing I would stress, I think I echo sort of what's, what's been said already, appreciation for both of you on sort of all that, the time and energy that you put to put forth a thoughtful budget that does reflect our priorities as a district. And I would sort of, apologies, I am not, I'm not going to repeat myself because I can't trust that I'll be eloquent again.
What you had been saying was tight.
Yeah, but sort of this, you know.
Don't you hate that?
It's like.
That was like a must.
Rewind. It's never going to sound as good. But just saying, you know, there's obviously been a lot of thoughtfulness put into the budgeting, and that's very clear. I think, again, though, we are sitting, having a very similar conversation to the conversation we were having last year. That points to a bigger issue that we have not only in the schools, but as a town, that we do need to wrestle with, and it needs a bigger solution and a bigger conversation. That is, to your point earlier, it's a town-wide conversation. It's not just us, and that needs to happen because we can't continue to short-change our students because we can't have that hard conversation. The reality is, many of us have kids in the schools still, and we feel it, we see it every day in terms of what we're not delivering. And so that needs to be center in terms of all of our conversations that we continue to have. I do hope that somehow we're able to identify additional dollars. I'm going to keep my fingers crossed that that somehow happens. Like you said, Glenn, it's happened, and, you know, we, we don't know, right? We don't know what we don't know, and we definitely have needs and we can prioritize within those. But as I think, sort of, I think towards the conversation we're going to have in our regular meeting, thinking about the priorities that have surfaced, we need to hold on to those too. And how are we going to realize those priorities if we don't have more investment? So that's something we need to hold on to, but thank you so much for all the work that you continue to do and have done to get us to this point.
So I would like to share something with all of you that I've been kind of grappling with these last couple of weeks. So I appreciate the work that both of you have done to put this priority report, I mean, the priority report together as well as the priority list for our budget for this year. I look at those positions and I can't, like, you might be able to tell me that we could do these first and then wait on these till next year, but when I look at those positions as a school committee member and also as a mom, I have a very hard time kind of saying, oh, we can wait. Because Glenn, in one of your presentations slides, you talked about stuff that we waited on last year that we now have to do this year, and those needs get, you know, are even, become even bigger. So I do, I want to share some thoughts, and give me a few minutes. So we're all aware of what a year of interrupted learning did for our children during the pandemic. I mean, all of us went through it. In fact, three years later, we're still trying to address things like learning loss and social emotional wellbeing for our students. You mentioned it today in your presentation. Now we're asking these same students to wait another year to get essential resources like adjustment counselors and reading interventionists that they have needed these last several years. These aren't just priorities that showed up this year, they've needed it for the last couple of years. We've had a history of kicking the can down the road. We've heard that so many times, right? We do it all the time. You know, we look at our elementary school reading curriculum, you know, I looked it up the other day, it says it's partially meeting expectations, and it's been saying that for the last few years. And now we're starting to look at it, to review that curriculum this year, and talk about it in your priority report. And we've spent a lot of time addressing long-term space needs, but we hadn't really focused on short-term space needs other than dividing up our school buildings until recently. You know, with Mark's help, we went up and visited the fourth floor, and we looked at it as an opportunity. And recently, we got approved to get that completed, and we only gained 4,000 square feet. You know, that's nothing. We still have to address the other schools. And you know what? By the time it gets completed, it's, it's not going to be ready till September of next year. Our kids are still waiting. All those kids that were struggling last year are still working with those tight spaces. And so we still need to address short-term space solutions for the rest of our schools to help the students and staff that are still in the buildings. You know, over the last few years, and even tonight, I saw presentations highlighting highlights of people's spending, you know, and that it's lower than the state average. It's easy to come up with reasons to say, why should, we should wait till next year, and, you know, we didn't have enough time, we had, things came up like the NDTA vote and so on and so forth. But the kids in our buildings, and we're all parents, and we all have kids in the building, and they should be, that, they should be enough reason for us to prioritize this. You know, so as school committee, as a school committee candidate, I remember, and I know all of you guys did, we, we said we would advocate for our children, you know, and that's what we need to do. You know, if these essential positions that directly benefit our students right now, if they cannot be included in this year's budget, you know, I can't pick and choose which one. Like, they're all important. The way you put that in your presentation, reinforce that. So, you know, I hope that we prioritize that with any long-term plans that we have on the override, you know, maybe potentially later this year. You know, those things need to be equally prioritized because we cannot forget about right now only, and say, oh, we'll visit it next year, or we'll visit it in 16 months, or whatever the timeline is. You know, we should always be looking to address immediate and long-term needs at the same time because our kids have been through enough. And a year is a long time for kids who have already been waiting for three years for stuff, you know? And, you know, I hope, I'm asking my school committee colleagues to join me in, in advocating for these resources to support our children. Thank you.
Anna, thank you very much for those comments. I mean, I think you're right. You just spoke persuasively about why this matters so much and, you know, why we've been talking about these needs not only since December, when they were first formally presented as we began to discuss our budget, but as you pointed out, Selena, you know, going back to previous years. So I think, you know, I have heard, as we've had these conversations, that, you know, to me, we are on the same page as a school committee in agreeing with our superintendent and our assistant superintendent that these, which, you know, and I know with all, with the two of you are the staff that helped you identify the priorities that inform this budget in the first place. So to me, like, we as the Milton Public Schools team are on the same page in recognizing that these are the needs. And, you know, certainly, I couldn't agree more with each of you who have spoken to that hope that, you know, funding will be available to address as many of these needs as possible. I mean, the needs are the needs. We've been clear, we've been consistent. And the reality is that, you know, this is our part of the process, is to explain what those needs are, and the select board hears about the needs of each of the departments in the town, and they have the big picture of the town, where they then determine, you know, the process that they feel is going to fulfill their responsibilities from their, where they sit. So it's an ongoing conversation, and it's tough because of, you know, what we've all recognized here, that we have this just perpetual challenge in our town in terms of our limited resources. So, you know, certainly, I don't believe the conversation ends here. This is sort of the official night where we present to the public, although we've been presenting to the public all along, because this has been presented many, many times at this point in different versions, but then we gel around this version that we've seen tonight, and we've seen it several times before. But I mean, I thank you, Anna, for your voice on it. Mark, Selena, like, all of us feel it in our own ways. And, you know, I think that it is our role, and I've, I've heard different of you say this in different ways, that, you know, that's what we have been elected to do as school committee members, is at the end of the day to advocate for the needs of the schools. That's the needs of our staff, our educators, as well as our students. And I think that is what we're doing. So it will continue on. You know, as you said, Glenn, the needs-based budget is what, is in the warrant. That is, that is our request. And, you know, the, as you said, Bev, the warrant committee and the select board, look at all the information they have before them, which goes beyond the schools, includes all the other departments as well, and they then make their determinations. And I do, you know, think it's important to, even though it's hard, and even though at this point in time, our understanding is the level service budget is what we are able to provide. You know, I think it is important that we maintain a spirit of collaboration across these different committees, you know, superintendent to town administrator, because the truth is, we have to work together. If, if we do not work together, it, you know, it's ultimately not going to help us make the progress we know we need to make this year and in the coming years as we were hearing about. So, yeah, no doubt, it's, it's difficult. I, I am thinking about how less than a month ago, I think, we were talking about cuts, we're talking about layoffs. That's the fluidity of this process, right? It's easy to forget that. I think I've tried to block it out because it was such I think I tried to block it out because it was such, so horrifying at that time. But then from there, you know, as projections sort of became more clear, we were able to understand that a level service budget is attainable. And to your point, Glenn, I guess we are all just, you know, we're not just hoping for the best, but we're going to continue, you know, working for it as a team. I don't, you know, I wish I had a more like satisfactory way to express what I'm trying to say, but it's just.
No, what I would say, Lizzie, is that I appreciate the way you just put it, which is an acknowledgement that we're all on the same page. It's not we, you know, we're not coming at it. And I think that is definitely true. And I also appreciate your reminder that we will not get to an answer on our own, right? That this requires the collaborative approach of making sure we work with the various bodies that are involved and sort of getting us to that point. And I trust that we're going to find a way forward together. But that's really the way we need to do and have these hard conversations and how and when that happens, obviously we need to figure it out and it's not up to us. But I am very encouraged to know that we all feel passionately about making sure that we're meeting the needs of our schools and our students, our administrators, et cetera. But how we will get there, we will not get there on our own. We need to work with, with the different bodies that are involved and that's the warrant committee and the select board and we will continue to do that.
Yeah, and our part in that is to continue to be clear about why these things matter. And, you know, Dr. Pavlicek, your presentation really, I think, accomplishes that very clearly. You, I mean, that has, I will say, really continued to like get stronger and stronger because we have a very clear understanding of why these needs exist, you know, concretely what they are, what, what we see as the solution. So that's important because it's, you know, especially when resources are so tight. We're definitely not going to get anything we don't ask for, first of all, but we're also not going to get anything that we don't ask for and really make the case for why this is so important. So I think that we are doing that job and, you know, each of, each of your comments are part of that effort, you know? So it's, this is where we as school committee members and, and district leaders like really worked, worked together in that way as well. So, you know, this isn't the last time we're talking about this by any means. I mean, it's, this is just like you said, Beverly, it's kind of one, it's kind of one step in the process, right? Which is to conduct this hearing and provide that opportunity for, for our community to have their voices in the process as well. So I don't know if, I know this has definitely gone on longer than we anticipated.
I was, I was wondering whether I should.
Does anybody have, anyone have any closing comments around this table? I mean, we're going to obviously adjourn this conversation and carry right into our, our, a regular meeting.
I just had one clarify. So do we have an opportunity to go before the select board as a full committee and talk about, not as like a citizen speak, but like.
I think that's the warrant committee. The way it's structured is the warrant committee that hears it and then they make a recommendation that else.
So we don't? Okay.
We can show like, because you're a citizen of the town, you can go.
But not as school committee first.
And that, no, you just go to the warrant committee. That's our, unless I'm missing something.
Well, Lizzie, when, and advocated for us to the select board in the last public comment, again, I think we, to the point you made is we have a unanimous vote, two unanimous votes, right? The original vote and then the reinforcing that we want to stick with this, that these are the points you made, like essential things. So I think we have voted wise, you know, we know we have clarity and I think then could continue to attend the select board public speak to advocate that, talk to, you know, any other body else who wants to do that and advocate that our schools, you know, if we can find additional funds.
I mean, that has been conveyed and then, you know, I think it is, it is one of the multiple factors, I believe, or considerations that are being weighed.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Thank you again. All right. So, okay, with this, I'm going to adjourn.
Do you want to do that?
Uh, yes, make a motion, make a.
Make a motion to adjourn our school committee public budget session.
All in favor? Okay, this hearing is adjourned.
All right.
This is my first time I ever did that.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
So are we, is the Zoom able to still go?
That's what's on TV.
So we just can now go to order?
Yep.
We could all get, leave and then walk back in or something.
Yes, in normal circumstances.
Okay, so I would like to call to order our regular school committee meeting for tonight, March 6th, 2024. And we will begin this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so evening again, everybody, to anybody new joining us online. I want to actually begin our meeting tonight by acknowledging the tragic loss that I think we're all aware of, the loss of Emily Butt, who was a Cunningham student that passed away last week after a courageous battle with leukemia. So I just wanted to acknowledge that our hearts are with Emily's parents, siblings, grandparents, friends and teachers, particularly with the Cunningham community, which we are really strongly represented by on this committee, but really with hearts with everyone in Milton who knew and loved Emily. So I'd love to just take a moment of silence to honor her memory right now. So we'll move on to approve the agenda for tonight. I know that we have no minutes to approve tonight, that is one change. I'm sorry, I know it's hard to just move right into this. Apologize for that.
We have no facility advisory committee report for tonight.
Thanks. So we had the citizen speak at the budget hearing, but we have another open-ended citizen speak at this time. Doesn't appear that we have anyone in person to participate in citizen speak, but if you are here online and would like to participate in citizen speak, can you please raise your hand at this time? Okay, doesn't appear that anybody's raising your hand. Just a few more seconds if you would like to raise your hand to participate. Okay, so it doesn't appear we have any citizens for citizen speak tonight, so we can just begin with our superintendent's report.
Great. Good evening. Before we welcome FA here in the audience, I wanted to just share a couple things. One is just how exciting yesterday was. This was our PD day where we brought all staff together. We spent time talking about the priority report. I'll be talking momentarily about the priority reports, I won't share in total detail. But it was just, just wanted to share, it was such a culminating point in the last year of my life, you know, in, in planning and listening and talking with people and being able to, to finally bring staff together to talk about it was just, felt really good. So I'm excited in a moment here to, to share more about that. The report is in draft right now, so we are working on some final edits. You all had a chance to look at it, obviously, in draft form. That will be going out next week to, to the community and I'll, I'll put, you know, create a letter to go inside that. So there's still a few, few little typos, things like that, that we're working on, so that will be finalized by next week. So I'm excited to send that out. One other thing I just wanted to mention before welcoming FA is School Building Committee. I'm going tomorrow morning at 9:15 to Cunningham Hall. There was a Zoom webinar last night.
Yes.
And March 11th at 6:30 in the MHS auditorium. Those are, those are info nights. I just wanted to mention those. And now can I segue into.
Please.
Welcoming FA and then we can get the other two votes together.
Sounds great.
So FA Ego Saga Shavers is our new director of DEIB.
Welcome.
Welcome.
And we are so excited to welcome you.
Thank you.
Do you want to share a little bit with the school committee just about kind of your journey here and I'm sure they have a few questions too?
So my name is FA, like Dr. Vera said. I'm currently working on my doctorate at Boston University. I'll be graduating in May, so the countdown is on. My focus, my research focus is on educational equity, specifically teacher training and helping all students succeed and make it to the finish line successfully and thriving. Before I went back to school for my doctorate, I was at the Lexington Public School Districts for about six years, where I worked with teachers district-wide on diversity, equity, inclusion and belongingness aspects. We created affinity groups, clubs and a lot more that we will obviously get into later, but I'm very excited to join the Milton Public Schools. I'm excited to bring my talents here and to work with you guys. So I'm open to any questions.
Welcome to Milton.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you for being here tonight. It's great to meet you.
Me too.
Thank you so much for being here. I'm so welcome to Milton and we're excited about you and we hope, we're looking forward to the great things you're gonna do.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Go for you.
I got my master's there in social work and then came back six years later for my PhD.
Me too. All right, we'll talk. Oh, welcome.
Thank you.
I have the privilege to sit in the hiring committee for this position and get to meet FA before this time and she just wowled all of us. So we are very excited to have her and very exciting to have you at the Milton Public School. Looking forward to see all the great things you'll bring.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess we don't have any questions for you yet. I'm sure that will change once you're here.
I'll be here.
So, yeah, thank you again for joining us and welcome to Milton.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
See you next week?
Yes.
Yeah. So last week we got to meet both the assistant, new assistant superintendent of finance and operations and it's of, it says for on the agenda, but it's of. Just wanted to mention that.
Thank you for that clarification.
And the consolidated facilities director. We do need a vote on both of these, they could probably done as a slate.
When are they both effective?
Effective, for, for Tom, he's kind of making the transition now, so I think it's effective immediately. The assistant superintendent of finance, I just said for. That's why, that's why I had to say it out loud. That's July 1st.
July 1st, okay.
We are going to be working on a transition plan though, so we will, we will be asking her to come in and work with Glenn and we also know where he lives, so we're not, we're not too concerned about getting everything done by July 1st.
I make a motion to approve both the position of assistant superintendent of finance and operations and the consolidated facilities director.
I second.
To approve the contracts for them. Yes.
Approve the appointments.
Thank you. All right, so all in favor? Great, so does that just bring us to your priority report?
Yeah. Can we just say that's four really big hires you've now had to make in the last month, so.
Take a moment.
Yeah. That's really, that's a lot of work.
A couple deep breaths.
To get there and, you know, hopefully these folks are around for a very long time.
Yeah.
To support you.
Yeah. Sorry.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you. Yeah. Um, yes, so we're now onto the priority report and I'll kind of continue what I was talking about from yesterday. So I'm going to show, we've got a slideshow here. I just adapted, essentially adapted some of what I shared with the staff yesterday and we'll give you kind of an overview just of, you've all had a chance to look at it, I think. Right?
Yes, of course. Yes.
Don't want to assume anything.
Yes, I did.
Okay. So I want to help to kind of build context a little bit and talk, you know, I'll be sharing more later with, with the public, but wanted to give you just a, a sense of kind of how we're thinking of this. So you, do you want to go? Yeah. So as you remember, this is the, this was, this is kind of the end of phase two, consolidating the, the findings from the listening and learning and the assessment of our systems. We had talked about as we looked at what the priority report would look like, there were a number of different approaches that we considered. We eventually settled on and decided that following the structure of the entry plan in terms of those different areas made the most sense. So that's why there are four priority areas within the priority report. To the next slide. So this is our, a draft shot of the, the cover of that report. Go to the next slide. So the first, as you know, the first part of this is the survey and then a distillation. So that second part is a distillation of the listening and learning that I did. You know, and I would say pretty much it was from January when I was hired all the way to December. So it's, it's, you know, in some ways I've been, I've been here for now over a year and have a pretty good idea. I've talked to a lot of people, have a, have a pretty good idea of what some of the issues are. And so I tried to articulate those in that second section. Those also came from staff meetings, so I spent a day at each building over the fall. And some of the, the feedback from the listening and learning forums as well is, is included in that portion of the report. Want to go to the next slide? Want to go to the next slide? These are the three questions that were asked in the survey, which you saw. Next slide. The themes that I would say that came out of, and, you know, I could have written more themes probably, but these were the ones that I thought were important to call out from the Listening and Learning. One, the top one is central focus on academics. I think if I could pick one thing that spans our town and our community, it is this. I think everybody, people have different ideas about what that should look like, but everyone holds this very strongly. And it's exciting that there is so much focus on that because I think it's going to mean that we're going to be able to get a lot done in that area. The second thing, and people have used the term silo, disconnection, but the fact that we don't have a lot of systems in place in Milton, in our district, and it makes it harder for us to assess how we're doing. It makes it harder for us both at this level, at the school committee level, at the superintendent level, at every level. And if we're going to really move our district forward, we need to be able to have systems that help us to both maximize, like, best practice in teaching and learning, and also be able to see the progress we're making because the data that we're looking at is valid and reliable. And right now, you know, the data you saw in the priority report, you know, is primarily MCAS and some, some iReady data and kind of benchmarking data, but we have a lot of work to do. And you saw that, I'll be talking about future recommendations. Assessment is one of the areas that we need to work on more alignment. So that's just kind of around that kind of coherence. The third, the third theme that came out was establishing an inclusive culture that values the diversity of Milton. It's one of Milton's greatest strengths, and people shared from kind of many different vantage points, the need to look more, more closely at our, at our human resources development, having and recruiting more staff of color in our school system. And also just talking about and building a shared understanding of what it means to be, to look through an equity lens in this work. And, and some work has happened in that area, but we have, we have so much more work to do to, to understand that together and actualize that. Students, I wanted to put something in here from students. Students talked about wanting to be more active in, in the decisions that impact them. And I see lots of places where we can, we can do that. We've done it a little bit here at this level, but there are lots of other places that we're going to be able to, I think, think about ways to, to bring students in where maybe historically we haven't. And then engaging parents and community deeply and authentically. And this one, I would say, is also connected to communication. Lots of comments around communication and wanting clear communication, more communication, more connection. So thinking about ways to bring our, and designing ways to bring families into our schools, sometimes increasing communication, sometimes decreasing. Not sending an email for every thought that comes into our minds. So those are things that, those were, I think, some of the main themes. Obviously, the report includes lots of other themes, too, but I just wanted to kind of call those out. Okay, next slide. So these are the, as you know, these are the four priority areas. To the next one, and I'm just gonna, just talk about the, the future recommendations. The, I think a lot of, I stressed in my presentation in the morning, so we were in the auditorium for, I don't know, 40 minutes or so. And I, I talked about, you know, contextualized the report, talked about what we'd be doing during the day. And one of the things that I, I shared that I think is really important is people were probably expecting after listening and assessing that they would get a list of things that we're doing. And while I would love to just state the things we're doing and be done, and there we go, if, if staff and community don't build a shared understanding of where we are and don't respond to, to these kind of future recommendations, which are really kind of like, this is an area we need to look at. A lot of people are talking about it. It's going to impact student achievement. What do you think? If we don't call people in and they, and they don't own it, we will not be able to sustain it in three years, in five years. There's going to be some new initiative you've never heard of that someone is talking about. And that is the history if you look back. So what, what I stressed to staff was that if we're going to make real change, you all need to be a part of this. And the whole day was around them responding to these future recommendations. So in our first session, we had the job alike session where staff met with, and I think we talked about this a little bit previously, they met with, first grade teachers all met together, or ELA 6 through 12 met together. And they talked from their vantage point, like, what, what, how do, how do we, in our roles, see these recommendations? What's important? What's being missed? What's not here? And then at the end of that first session, they took a Survey Monkey survey and prioritized what they thought of these recommendations. They even prioritized the school committee relations, so we can, we can read those later.
Who facilitated those job alike discussions?
We had 20, how many? It was
28 to 29.
We had Unit B, so all of our, our directors, coordinators, principals.
They were the facilitators.
The facilitators, yeah. They all were assigned a room. Yeah. And there was a small group activity and then larger group activities as well. And then there was choice in the second session for people to come together to talk about MTSS, or talk about facilities, or talk about social-emotional learning. So, so people got to choose an area that we had already identified in, you know, in all of our work, that we thought would be really important and helpful to get feedback on. And that, that was, from what I've heard, was also really meaningful to staff.
So these four priority areas is not the only choices they see.
What's that?
So these four choices, the priority report priority areas
Yeah.
is not the only choices they see, they can choose from.
No, no, they had, I mean, we had 30 topics or something, right?
We sent a survey a week before with 30 different areas, possible areas of interest from the priority report, had people choose, and then based on the number of people who chose them, some of them had, we had to put in two rooms, some of them, you know, combined a couple together. We ended up with about, again, 30 concurrent sessions during the second session. Again, facilitated by all the Unit B and principals and so forth. And so they were running for another 90 minutes.
So with the data that you've collected from the Survey Monkeys post-session, you're going to report out what the conclusions were and what direction these, what direction they agreed was necessary.
Yeah, but we're gonna, I'll talk about that. I've got a slide to talk about where we're, how we're gonna do that, where we're headed. So these are the, I don't probably need to read off all these recommendations because you've seen them. So do you want to maybe go through these? And, and the community will be getting these next week, so.
So skip through?
Yeah, these are just all the, all the different future recommendations. Okay, so here's the timeline, which is kind of the important thing. And so what we're, what we're looking at doing right now is, over the next few weeks, this started yesterday, is bring up, bring together all that data. So we've got poster paper, we've got the survey data, we've got handouts that were brainstormed on in Session 1 yesterday. We have index cards from the second session. And then we also, in the afternoon, staff went back to their buildings and went through a protocol with their, with, as a full building, to look at, from a building perspective, what does the priority report look like for us as a building? So not you as an individual teacher, but unique to Cunningham, Tucker, the high school, what does this mean for us and our work? One of the, I think one of the dances in school leadership is that perfect blend of district and building. And it's a tension point, if you've ever been a building administrator. You need time with your building to develop the culture of your building, and if the district is constantly pushing stuff and being like, you're gonna do this, you're gonna do this, you're gonna do this, it's very hard as a principal to be successful. So the principal needs time to, like, develop their team. So that, that's kind of why we gave them time in the afternoon, because that, that is an important aspect of this as well. So in terms of what we're doing, you know, how we're kind of getting to June, we're gonna bring this data together, find a way to make it organized in a way that we can really assess it and understand it. We're then going to be working on either putting individual, like, separate groups or one larger implementation team together, a representative team, that can sift through some of that data and help us to see kind of where we are between the future recommendations, the reactions to the future recommendations, and then what does that, what does that mean in terms of the things that we commit to? And we have to figure out what kind of timeline we're mapping this onto. But what are the things that we are going to commit to? And how do we simplify, both put our arms around all of this, which is big, right? Like, if you read, if you read through each future recommendation and you, you told a staff member, we're, we're gonna do these, I think it might be 22, but they're, I mean, like, it's too much to think about doing in one year, right? All, all of those things. So we, we need to, at the end of this process, we need to, through this implementation plan, have clarity around direction, have enough depth in it so that we're not missing anything, but we also have to simplify it. We have to simplify the work so that people don't feel like they're doing 150 initiatives, which is how people have felt. And that, that has come through loud and clear from pretty much everybody. So I'm very attuned to, like, making sure that everybody is together, that we understand where we're going, we're making real change, we're doing it as fast as we can, but we're doing it thoughtfully. So there's more to, there's more for us to figure out in terms of this, this timeline. We just talked about this today. We just put this together, slide together yesterday. So we're still definitely, like, trying to figure out some of the specifics here, but this is the general overview of where we're headed. One of the challenges to our timeline now, we talked about it today, in our, one of our curriculum groups, is developing a professional development plan for next year, which is, in school systems, you often are working on that now and would have it done, right? Like, pretty soon. Are you working on one right now?
We already done for the next three years in high school.
Yeah. That's what I mean. That's, that's kind of normal. It doesn't make sense for us to really commit to a lot, so we're gonna have to be doing more in the summer. One of the things that, that we've talked about and I feel pretty strongly about.
You mean the planning in the summer?
The planning, yeah. Yeah. Well, because otherwise, we're jumping the, jumping on, on the, on having the implementation plan done. But one of the things that we've talked about that I feel pretty strongly about is not, not, not focusing on consultants coming in and doing this work for us. We, we need to do this work ourselves. So I'm, I'm not concerned about lining up people to come in and lead this work. We're, we're going to lead this work. We have a lot of expertise here.
I was gonna say, in terms of when you do finally put together what the feedback is, if there's an area for which there isn't internal capacity, you might keep the, keep your mind open and if there's money in the budget to bring in the expertise, what I do, there's a lot of, I know. You're not, listen, what is it, June 30th? He's, he's planning in the summer. You'll be here for most of it. No, all jokes aside, it's, it's making sure that you just have an open mind, because we do have a significant amount of expertise that we could be, we could have been leveraging all along. But I will profess, I don't know everything. You know, just keep it, keep it. So with that day, when that consultant comes in, you know what anybody's saying? Thought you said we weren't bringing someone in. It's, it's okay to say, we need help. There are lots of people that may not genuinely know their content, but there are a lot of people who do. And they're really sharp, and I would think that you might consider that if you need to.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Yeah, it's not, it's not an absolute. It's more being sure that we're, we have to, what has been happening, and this is true in a lot of places, there's no real setup with, with, within the system to take whatever the consultant is bringing and, and implementing it and sustaining it and monitoring it and evaluating it and assessing it. And, and looking at it in, like, long-term. What tends to happen is, I care about personalized learning, so I bring in someone and staff are just going throughout their day, and they walk into the PD, and there's someone there talking about personalized learning, then they go back to their classroom. And there's not, generally, this is just generally what happens, there's generally not a lot of follow-through to, to, to see, like, to put structures in place to help every teacher actualize that.
Job indebted, like.
I think most school districts are like that, unfortunately.
That's, that's my experience.
That makes sense.
But not, but not us.
Going forward.
That's what I'm saying.
I have to say that I think that's a great idea, that, because I think it gives people something to be part of and believe in, right? And, and they're invested in it to make it, like, make it come true. Because I noticed it, like, I remember, like, listening in, I think it was, like, personalized learning forum last year, and we had a consultant come in and talk. There was a huge disconnect, right? Like, between what that person was saying and what their staff were saying, and, and I see it, I saw it. You know, so I totally appreciate the direction that you're going in with this, because I think that would make a huge difference, because there is often a disconnect, and I really, really do appreciate the amount of input that you have, you know, collected and put into this process, because I think we're all kind of part of this. And, you know, we're all invested in your success, or the success of this. So, thank you.
This reminds me of Student Center Learning. You're putting the Teacher Center in this whole process, and I can foresee they'll bring in a lot of great success.
So in terms of, this planning timeline is great to understand sort of how this work is going to get done, you know, truly, like, collaborative way, which is what will make it successful ultimately. Can you talk a little bit more about, even if you don't have your plans sort of set, or maybe you do, what will be the community's experience of this sort of next phase? Because having read the draft report, having participated in several of the Listening and Learning sessions learning sessions, you know, I think it will be new for our, members of our community to see their feedback reflected back to them. And I just would love to make sure that, and there may be a role, I don't know what role we have to play in this, but I would love to make sure that, to the extent possible, like, people understand this and have multiple opportunities to access it in different ways. Because I think that will also really help build the buy-in at the community level for the work that you're doing, which connects to everything else, including the budget discussion we had, you know, and so many things. So what's your thinking around that?
So under the design execution, there's a, bold there, develop a draft based on stakeholder input. So my, my vision of this is bringing together the implementation team, and then them being responsible, rather than just me, the implementation team being responsible for whether their forums or whatever form it takes, having them design kind of the stakeholder input after doing a little bit of work. I think it would make sense to go out now before assimilating some of this data, I think we're going to have something to share, as opposed to just the report. So, you know, we're, we're going to post haste, put this group together, the implementation team. And, and what I'd like to do is have them design that community outreach to gather input and feedback to kind of burnish the final product.
So would that stakeholder input occur, like, before the end of this school year?
Oh, yeah.
At the end, in that?
No, before we get to, yeah.
Is that happening by May 3rd or after May 3rd?
That would be happening between March and May.
That that input would be, I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think sooner rather than later is...
So in the meantime, will your report be available, like, similar to how your entry plan was available?
Yeah.
Like, it will be posted on the website and hard copies will be distributed?
Yeah.
Okay. So people, community members can be reading your report?
And I'm going to put it in my, my, my monthly communication. So that's going to be my topic, is the report, and I'm going to write something to go along with the report, too.
I do have a clarification question around academic excellence.
Yeah.
I think a lot of the things that you shared reflects very common practices around change management.
Yeah.
And I think the, the uniqueness of public education and how teachers improve their individual instruction is like the layer that the private sector change management doesn't have, because it's private sector.
Yeah.
When I look at the components of the academic excellence priorities, I didn't, and maybe it's, it's embedded in here, but it doesn't talk about having instructional leadership and even coaching cycles that allow teachers that, once they've gone through a meaningful data cycle or a meaningful professional development experience, when they're ready to go back into their classrooms and practice what they learn, who's guiding them and providing them with feedback for the times that they struggle? Is, it might be implied in here?
I think it's implied in a couple places potentially, but I, I think that's a super important point, that, you know, right now, our structure, we don't really have any coaches per se right now in our district. I think we have people that coach, but we don't have...
Instructional coaches.
Instructional coaches, it's not a position we have.
Do we have instructional leaders?
We have instructional leaders, yeah. And so that, so part of this, part of this process is going to be talking through, as we, as we look at both the systems we need to create and the instructional frameworks and the assessment, how do we sustain that? That's going to mean all of us looking at our positions and thinking about, okay, what does that mean in, in terms of like, my role? So, so that is work that, that is, has to be a part of this, yeah.
So when you say my role, do you mean, is that the administrator that's the instructional leader? Is it a coach that you anticipate, in terms of...
I think it's both, it's, I think it's looking at what is the role of the building leader? What is the role of the central office in sustaining that? What is the role of our instructional leaders who are subject area specific? So, but I, but I think everybody's carrying pieces of that. It's not, you know, on one, you know, like, all the different levels.
I just think this instructional leadership is so, it's something that people take for granted, because so few people do it well. And the more capacity you have to do it, the, when you talk about making all boats rise instructionally, if there's no one in the building that can go in that classroom, regularly observe teachers, give them feedback, and help them revisit any goals or plans they have, they're kind of on their own. So it'd be really interesting for you all to see next year, in terms of the, as we implement this, what does it look like for a teacher who's trying something new? And who is supporting them to make sure they're successful? For, for some of us in our jobs, someone will just say, you go figure it out, and you kind of like, you have to figure it out. But instruction is so complicated, that I just don't, I don't take for granted that it's not something that, for which you benefit from having expertise, especially more than one person, given the size of our buildings.
Well, and I think as we, as we build the system, and we look at our, our budget and our positions, you know, we, we might be looking at additions, we might be looking at subtractions, right? We might be looking at...
Changing.
Different structures to support that, yeah. And without, without building the, without collectively building this, this system, we have no grounds to do any change.
I couldn't agree more with you, Bev. I mean, I think that there's, you know, nothing more important than being able to go into the classroom with the teacher and be able to see the teacher's practice, support the teacher and their practice, see what they're struggling with, with the implementation of that curriculum, or the data collection, or the student management, or the whatever time management, just general, like, there's so many pieces...
Things that can go wrong.
That teachers have to be expert at in order for everything to work well. And, you know, beyond even just the, the content area, we have a lot of content area leaders, but you have very few school-based kind of support admin, right? It's extremely lean. And so their ability for the principal and the one AP across a 600-student building to see every teacher regularly lead these data cycles, all that is really challenging, really challenging to do it on, yeah, a regular enough basis to make impact. And to have teachers feel like it's making an impact, and that, you know, on a week-over-week basis, they say, okay, this is what I'm working on, and like, this person's helping me, me get there, I'm not just doing it alone. But I do think that a lot of the things you're naming within the academic focus area are aligned to that overall premise of like, how do we continue to grow our teachers and grow the impact they can make? You know, I mean, but it is holistic and like, you know, in some ways, I read it like, overwhelming of, you know, aligned curriculum, data collection, data analysis cycles, systems for collaboration, professional development overhaul, like, that's, that's all of the stuff. That's like, everything that's like, really important to lay out. So, you know, to the point of the implementation plan, I'm fascinated with what that will be and how you, to your point, take that in chunks, and people see that over the next three to five years of, hey, here's what we're working on, here's how we're going to build over time, we're, we're not going to be able to get from point A to point Z in, in a single year. So like, let's get from point A to point D, right? Or F, or whatever it might be.
And narrowing the scope of the responsibilities is, you can't do all of this new stuff if you're not seeing what you're not doing. It'll be really interesting to see what you all come up with to supplement...
You're still, you're still at Milton, aren't you?
I've got two months. But I, I recognize that we've, I've, I've said this as long as, we've asked too much of our educators, like, they've, they've, over the last 20 years in ed reform, they've assumed so much more responsibility. And I have made it abundantly clear to our elected officials outside of the schools that the town really should start picking up some of the responsibility for those things that are not within our real scope of work. It's this idea in business, it's called stick to your knitting, like, what you do well is what you should focus on and do really well. We do a lot of other stuff, and that's just because of the nature of schools. But starting to think creative, stick to your knitting. Start thinking about, of those things that you have been tasked to do, as the new leader with this vision, we can now engage in these things. Like, if this is phase one of the work, phase two is then to say, who else is picking up the slack for the things that still need to get done but are not in our best interest to do, because this is not we do well.
Or just that we, again, this is not, we'd love to be able to do all these things.
But we cannot.
We can't do all these things well.
We're not a full-service school.
And so like, what are the things we have to prioritize? And then just say, we're not going to get to that. But we can say that clearly, because we have this report, this analysis of saying, this is how we're going to build. So like, again, that's, that's going to be your three thing, because we're a new one, and we've like, laid this out. And obviously, each year, then you assess and maybe, maybe change it. But that at least provides the ability also, I think, to push back on new initiatives, because you have...
Yes.
You have a vision, you have a broader vision...
You need that.
To say, this is where we're going, and we're sticking with this, rather than jumping to the point you've made of...
Hot shot.
Hot shot, yeah. I did have one question also on the academic focus. Just, you talked about aligning elementary school schedules. Is that just bell schedule, like arrival dismissal? Or are you thinking of like, actually, the block schedules of when kindergarten teachers, for instance, have common planning times, that you could do a Zoom meeting across sites? That's what you're thinking of?
Yeah. I think both those things, yeah. And it's been explored here previously, so, you know, what I would say is a lot of the, this is not a start-from-scratch reality, right? We've got a lot of excellence in a lot of places. Some of these things will take more time, some are just honestly, like, some leadership and organization and, and sustaining something to, to move them. So it's, some will take longer and some will not. And I think that, that will be what, as we're thinking about a year one, year two, year three kind of timeline, we'll be taking that into consideration, too. Like, we could do these, this one big thing and a couple smaller things that don't take as much, aren't as time-intensive, or, you know, one of the, one of the challenges we have is professional development time is extremely limited. We have two full days, next year we have four early release days. We're not going to build all of this in professional development time, which comes back to your comment before about coaching, right? We have to do this during the day. This is a push-in, this is not a pull-out, essentially. And I think a lot of, a lot of districts will try to do everything pull-out, and it doesn't, you don't get there. You know, the, the pull-out is almost icing on the cake. It, it can reinforce in some ways, but it's not where you really develop.
Yeah, and I've seen people use... I've seen people use that PD date to introduce a topic, that's then followed up through a coaching cycle.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's a launching point, but it's not the, in many cases, PD is the launch and the end, and people go back to their classrooms, and whatever they went through is never implemented. And that's, I think, the saddest thing about the many investments in consultants. They can bring all their expertise, but the teacher, when they go back to the classroom and close the door, they might try it once, and if they're not successful, there's no one there to process that experience and say, oh, this is the part where you could have done this differently. So...
I do think it's a short-term bridge, though, though, like, the common planning time, the collaboration between teachers to, again, collectively...
That's the place to start.
Debrief, right? This is something we're working on, how did you go in your class, how did you go in my class? And being able to have that designated time. And the work that's already been done prior to our arrival of creating more common planning time, but doing that even across sites, you know, making that potentially stronger is certainly helpful. But, yeah.
Do we have department heads?
Me, too.
In the school district? But you do, right? In the small school that I add, the department has come observe everyone's classes throughout the year, two times, and we have short meetings to debrief and how, talk about how it related to our goals that we set at the beginning of the school year. And other than the department have assistant head of the school, and the head of the school also come observe us once a year, and we also have the debrief session. So I guess that's similar to the, the system that you might want to create. I'm not, not sure if it will work right here, but...
We don't have the staff, we have like, like, one person for four elementary schools per content area. Like, it's, it's a scale. So those people that are spending more than us, that's probably what they're spending it on.
And we're also encouraged to visit our colleagues' classes. So maybe there's something that, if it, if all, everyone's classes are aligned in a way that works.
That's powerful, that's very powerful.
Yeah. But then you also need somebody who knows the classes well enough to identify which class they should go see, right? Like, oh, go, you're struggling with this, this teacher knows how to do that, like, go, go see this teacher. And so if no one is really going in the classrooms and seeing who's doing it well and strongly, and identifying that this person is like an exemplar we want to highlight, then that's a problem. But I also think from a budget standpoint, even like, the use of, you know, and I'm sure it's something that might need to be negotiated within union, but like, videotaping of classrooms and those types of things, even if you can't be in there from a scheduling perspective, of like, using that as a debrief within common planning time.
Well, I'm definitely personally interested in the feedback you will get, will be able to later share with us about this school committee relations piece, and like, those of us not, you know, just seeing how folks think about that, who are not like, around this table. And I also just want to say, you know, looking at the draft on page 12, like, you've identified these four priority areas. I think we've just been talking about how academic excellence in and of itself is so multi-layered, so obviously important. I'm thankful that you emphasize that as like, the leading priority. And also, we recognize that these climate, culture, well-being, and operations facilities and finance, like, these are also extremely complicated and extremely important. The school committee relations piece, I feel, definitely is important. I mean, it's, it's important for you to kind of make sure that you are able to do your job effectively. And also, I just would like to appreciate the fact that, so far, with your current school committee, like, you have buy-in, you know, for this plan, and I think these pieces you're laying out, because they're in process already. Like, these are things that we've already been working towards together. You know, so just to acknowledge that, there's like, the six of us, you know, and whomever comes on in the spring. But when you're talking about the other three areas, it's like, hundreds of people that you're working with there.
This one's easier, though.
So this is a little bit of a, like, that one of your four priority areas is, not that it's easy, I mean, there's a lot to do, as we're finding out, but I hope that it will prove to not take like, a quarter of your time and focus, right? Like, I think we're, we're trying here to, to like, work with you there to, like, help streamline those things, because I see that as supporting the other three areas, right? It's not like, it's all a separate area, it's, once we get that, as we continue to strengthen that, it will strengthen academic excellence, it will strengthen the operations and the other piece, the climate piece, so...
Well, the staff were enthralled with it yesterday. They all wanted to talk about school committee relations.
I'm not sure if it got... I'll admit, I made a small joke about it. I mean, it was so easy, right?
Point there that you just walked right into.
No, I just, no, I said, we've got four priority areas, and...
We're going to talk about three.
We're going to talk about three. Unless anyone wants to talk about school committee relations, I didn't think you wanted to, and I got a small chuckle, so...
But it's like, small. It is an important piece of your puzzle.
I mean, it's, it's a huge piece of the district's puzzle. It really is.
We're making, I feel like we've already made a lot of progress in like, a very short time, so I'm very optimistic... So I'm very optimistic that that will hopefully become some, quickly become something that like, you know, is a, is a win for you.
Yeah, well, it's for us because it's like.
Yeah, for everybody.
Like if this is stable, then like so much can happen.
And I do wanna add that, you know, I know when each of us individually came on to this committee at various times, there were areas that we really were passionate about, right? And I think you've kind of captured all of that in here and created this like overall like priority area. You know, like these are the, our four priorities. And for, for us, like even though we, we might have different things that we, we personally prioritize, right? I think being at this table and what you've shared with us in the last, through this process in the last year, and now since you, since July 1, I feel like you've kind of gotten us all to align that all of these areas are equally important, which I think is a huge win on your part. So appreciate all the work you've done.
Thank you. Do you wanna do the last slide?
The row.
I just, I, two other, just two other things, I'm sorry. I wanted to name, highlight the, like the focus you had around teacher diversity and retention, like in hiring. I thought that was really great and aligned certainly to our desire to increase your capacity in that area potentially with an HR director. And again, another shout out for that, that funding. Because I thought the data you shared around our teacher diversity, or we should say lack thereof, especially is how that connects to our student population. For those who haven't seen the report, it's like 10% staff, teachers of color versus about a third of our kids are students of color. And then also the retention of that versus the retention of white staff, I thought was, again, first time I had seen that data, I believe. And, you know, it was surprising and, you know, seems like a significant area of focus. If we're trying to diversify, you gotta retain those people as you bring them in. And, you know, there's all kinds of reasons the research shows around why that is, and adding extra capacity, I think, would be really hugely helpful in addressing that goal.
Hundred percent.
The only other question I, I had particular interest in, and you've brought it up maybe a little bit, is around the ELA curriculum stuff. Of like, ELA is such a broad bucket that like, you know, the assessment of the curriculum, I, oftentimes in my experience, ELA curriculum can be really fantastic in a certain subsegment of ELA. Like, you know, nonfiction, reading comprehension, or something like that. But then in other areas, it just doesn't have nearly like what you need, like grammar, or writing, or phonological awareness, or whatever those things are. So just as you continue to do any assessment of kind of that curriculum, I think like being able to break that within kind of each of those, those strands of how we're supporting kids not just be good readers, but good writers, and grammatically correct writers, and all that, and all that kinda stuff would be, would be interesting.
Yeah, well, I think the, kind of the days of getting the textbook and it's gonna teach the class, you know, and it's gonna have everything in it are gone. So I, I agree that, you know, there's been a lot of focus with the science of reading on specific texts that are approved by DESI or by IES. And that's, that's important, but those are not, that's one piece of the, the greater puzzle. And that's kind of what we're, and I'm, I'm actually, you know, one of our future agenda items, which I was gonna talk about in our next meeting, was gonna be to invite Kat to come to talk about that work. She's part of a collaborative on the South Shore of ELA directors that are, are talking about kind of where they're headed in terms of both adoption, but also looking at the complexity that you're talking about.
Yeah, it's a lot to fit in. It is, a lot kids need to know.
And I do just wanna add though, I've noticed in the past year, like I remember like looking at my sixth graders writing samples last year and realizing that she couldn't really like get her point across. She knew what she wanted to say, but to like really communicate that on paper. And that has, I've seen leaps and bounds between sixth grade last year and sixth grade this year. So I have to commend the teachers for the, the efforts that they're focusing into writing this year. So that has been awesome. So I appreciate that they're supplementing and seeing the need for it and making those, you know, adjustments.
Are you gonna show us the last slide?
That's it.
It's right there.
No one at home could see it.
I just tried to make sure everyone at home could see it.
I just thought it was.
He loves pictures in his slides. He loves.
The long road is fine, but it should have been like, exciting.
Honestly.
That to me looks like total possibility. I see that, I'm like, look at, it's just like going off.
Nothing's in the way.
Yeah, it's a.
Looks like a zombie movie, right?
I looked at like New England ones. And there were too many trees. There's too much in the way. This is like, this is just like, yeah, like.
Personally, I like, I like your first slide, but, you know. I stayed there.
That was pretty nice.
Well, the amazing, amazing thing is the, the one that you're looking forward to at the end of the row, where the mountains are, you know?
I would like the end of the row to be that beach.
There might be a beach right there, right next to the mountain, or behind the mountain.
We've hit eight forty-five.
Thank you, Peter. And, you know, this is a milestone, so congratulations on like this, hitting this point. I remember when you laid it out and here, you know, here we are. So it's exciting.
Many hands.
Very exciting, and I'm really excited for the community to read your report and be able to, you know, move forward with you in giving the continued input. Okay, so do you have anything else under your report? All right, I only have one thing under the chairs report tonight, which is really just regarding an update or reminder about something that's gonna happen before our next meeting on March 20. And that is, just to kind of bring us back to where we are with the superintendent's evaluation process. So on January 3, as we all know, we conducted that mid-year evaluation check-in discussion with Dr. Burrows. Here is where the way, for me at least, that like time flies, starts to catch up with us. So the next step is that, and what I wanna make sure we're all reminded of, is that by March 15, in the process we all approved back in the fall, by March 15, Peter, you're gonna email us your evidence per the, the rubric that, that we will be working with from DESI as our evaluation tool. So we can all be looking out for that by the 15th. Between the 15th and our meeting on March 20, we will all need to find the time to make sure we're thoroughly reading that evidence that you have shared with us. Now, you're, you're not gonna be here at our meeting on March 20. But it, it will be at that meeting that we as a committee have the opportunity to ask clarifying questions about the evidence that Peter has shared with us, or about the rubric. If we still have any questions about the process as far as this tool we're using. So bow because you'll be not at that meeting. You'll just send your clarifying questions directly to Peter. You can copy me, just so I can make sure that we're closing the loop and like incorporating your questions as needed into our discussion. But that is something that we'll all come to our next meeting prepared to do. That meeting on March 20 will not be a discussion of Peter's performance. The questions are just to make sure we all understand like what we have in front of us to then do our jobs, to conduct our own individual evaluations. From there, we will have between March 20 and the 25 to, to complete and submit our individual rubrics. You'll submit those to Anna, Mark, and myself, the subcommittee. And it's, it's going to be that same day that the three of us are gonna meet to process and synthesize the six separate individual evaluations that we have. So we're meeting at 5:00 PM on that day. So that really, we need everybody's individual rubrics in hand by that meeting so that we're able to use our time to work through them. We will then work as the subcommittee to create a draft of the evaluation report that will be shared back out to the full committee with the opportunity for you to give feedback to me directly if you have changes or things that you need added into the overall report. Okay, so I'm just kinda laying this out because it's gonna start to come quickly.
So is that written somewhere?
I can see here.
Yeah, I will.
That's a lot of information.
Yes, I will send an email. I will send an email to everybody that like lays this out. It's all, it's, you know. And, and all you need to do is just keep track, like one, you, yes, you will be prompted at each step of this and just be paying, you know, just respond when prompted to do whatever that piece is. One note is that we did flip the meetings because we recognized we would need more time to complete this. So on our March 27 meeting, which was supposed to be a regular school committee meeting a Wednesday night, that's going to become our spring governance retreat. That buys us another several days to complete this process. And it will be April 2, which we had held as our, that was supposed to be our spring governance retreat night. It's a Tuesday night. That is going to be our regular school committee meeting now. And that will be the night that we have our official evaluation conversation. So that's everything, okay? And I will email it out, but I just wanted to check if anyone has any like clarification questions at this point in time.
Did you say April 2nd or 3rd?
It's April 2nd. It's April 2nd. That is incorrect in our calendar. We need that fixed.
So April 3 is the correct date?
No, it's Tuesday, April 2nd.
Okay.
It's Tuesday, April 2nd.
Starts at seven?
Yes. So we will flip the times. I just started a Microsoft Teams meetings. How did I do that? I don't even have. Have Microsoft Teams.
That's why, that's why we're missing.
Okay, nevermind. Yes, I just needed, because we haven't discussed this in.
So this meeting's not going virtual?
I don't think so. I think I closed it. We haven't discussed this in a long time, but I'm just like reminding all of us, this is our next phase here, so, okay. If we're ready to move on from that, we can just go straight to finance.
Well, I have warrant number, vendor warrant number 34 that we need to approve. So we have a motion to approve vendor warrant number 34 in the amount of $739,396.42 payable on February 29, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Fall in favor? Thank you, and that's it for the finance committee.
Okay, policy.
So there are two policies in the folder for you guys to read. Hopefully you've read them because they're nice and wordy. Sorry, I just lost my drive. Hold on. Sorry, I just lost my drive. What would I do with that?
So many things.
So the first one we have is the draft policy for our vision statement. So as I mentioned last week, we got rid of the first part. We included the strategic plan and the for 2022 to 2027, our current one, and then added our strategic goals below it. So that would be our new, our new vision statement. So I was just.
Probably get rid of the source down below.
Oh, yes.
Just 'cause it's no longer the source.
So we're doing, I think, a motion.
Not for first reading, no.
We're just doing a first reading today. Thoughts, comments? All right, so we're gonna go back to, then there is a tobacco-free school policy, policy ABC. And we're also doing a first reading of this. We have removed the reference to exhaust fuels of idle, from idling vehicles. I didn't see any today, what I'm hearing from both of you today. And included the other types of tobacco products into this policy.
We still have number four.
Yes, I just had a question about number four.
Number four should be deleted.
Okay, yes, that was my question.
We'll fix that.
I have a small question. I appreciated the addition of all the vaporizing stuff. Given the legalization of marijuana in Massachusetts and the use of that within vaping products, and that development certainly since 2012, it's, it's not, yeah, that was my question. It's just like, does it make sense to just add that within that? Is that covered in something separately?
I mean, I.
Drug-free policy in general?
Yeah, I think it's included in the drug-free policy. Tobacco has always been a separate policy, like federally. I don't know, there's a federal, do you know?
Yeah, it is, but the marijuana is in the drug-free policy.
Yeah, I just wonder if that. Didn't know if given, I mean, it used to be in the drug-free policy because it was illegal with all the other drugs. Now it's not, but, so that distinction, if that matters at all.
I think it's still illegal on school grounds.
Yeah.
Yes, that's probably.
So I think that's why it's still in the drug-free. Whereas tobacco is not illegal on school grounds.
Yes, it's just prohibited.
All right, thank you, Anna. So we will do a second reading with votes on these two policies at our next meeting. Okay. All right, let's see. The next report is me, that's Capital Improvement Planning Committee. Okay, so as you all know, I represent the school committee on the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. That's chaired by Select Board Member Richard Wells, and includes representatives from all the different town committees and departments. So the committee met last Thursday, as, as you may know, to approve the town's capital improvement budget for FY '25. And I'm just gonna give you some quick updates on how that pertains to, to the schools. So there are two segments of the capital budget. What we're using free cash for and capital borrowing. So using free cash of the things that we have requested as the schools department, we were, we were approved, because the, the budget was approved. We were approved to replace the floor scrubbers and cleaning equipment district-wide, as well as the educational space conversions district-wide, which was its own line item of $50,000, which is just for smaller projects that will be happening throughout the district. We were approved for district-wide architectural and engineering services for HVAC and space planning, as well as school technology replacement of network hardware and Chromebooks. And then there were some other items approved for town facilities, fire parks, and town technology needs as well. The, the total capital investments from free cash was $955,000 under the capital. Under the capital borrowing section, which is for items that will have a useful life of fifteen or more years, the big investment, which is amazing, so exciting, is that two million dollars for the Cunningham fourth floor project to become the usable educational space that we really need for overcrowding. And I just, again, would like to thank Mark, Anna, Glenn, and Peter for your like vision on that, your, your work to make that happen, the whole facilities advisory committee for all your work on that, so it will really make a big difference. And, you know, I know there's still a little bit of, because this, this funding will not become available until July one, you know, not yet clear exactly the timeline for when this could become available, whether that would have to be until September, a year from, a year and a half from now, if there's any possible way it could come online during the middle of next year, so that's an open question, I guess, but that investment is so important, really important.
It's, it's dependent on the design we get back, what the, the best use of that space is for two million dollars. But I do think we'll have a, an interim plan and a long-term plan, so I'd, I'd like to design a use for it, clear it out, figure out where all the junk up there goes. And then if, if it's going to be September twenty-five, let's, let's find a use for it next year, where we can, you know, it might not be fully finished, but we could still use the space, so just organizing it and prepping it.
Okay, so you'll, we'll keep talking about all that. But the, the committee was pleased to support that major request from us. The other items under borrowing for the schools include the district-wide replacement of exterior doors and hardware, as well as replacement of flooring. And then there were other investments for the cemetery, DPW, town facilities, as well as parks. And the whole amount that we'll be borrowing for the town's FY twenty-five capital requests is about three point nine million dollars. Obviously, we know that not all the requests were able to be fulfilled this year, so there were some of our capital requests that were deferred, that included water bottle filling stations, and as well as window repairs, unfortunately deferred. The Milton High School main basketball court refurbishment deferred, network hardware replacement at Milton High, Tucker, and Glover. And then, of course, other town departments had also some very important requests deferred as well. So just to remember that we're not the only department that isn't getting everything that we're asking for, but definitely positive experience for me participating in that committee. So appreciate the support of that committee for helping us meet all those important requests that, that are included. And any questions on that? Okay, so that leaves School Building Committee.
Yeah, Peter took a little bit of the fire out of, wind out of her sails here, but essentially the only update.
I can tell you why, though, because I looked at the agenda and I didn't pan down to the second page. So I, I thought about it first, and I was like, oh, it's not on there, I'm going to save it.
I appreciate it.
No, I thought of you.
Thank you. Yeah, so we did, we had a public PTO session last night, just sharing about the update, much the update that we have done here regarding kind of where we've been, where we are with the team, and where we, it looks like the timeline is moving forward between now and kind of the fall, and then potentially with, you know, an exciting opportunity to kind of open a new building by fall of twenty-twenty-seven, if we don't hit any roadblocks. So that, that was, first one was last night, the next one is, as Peter said, tomorrow morning at nine fifteen at Cunningham Hall, and then the following one is Monday, the eleventh, at six-thirty, right here in the high school. Do you know which room it's in? Is it in this room?
It's the auditorium.
It's in the auditorium.
Yeah.
All right, so people got to come out, we got to fill that auditorium. So those are upcoming engagement sessions, so that is the update.
Thank you. So we aren't approving minutes tonight. That just brings us to the next meeting agenda. As we've said, we'll have the superintendent evaluation clarifying questions piece.
Was there an update?
You skipped, you skipped, pal. I have a short update.
I'm sorry, bow. Oh, that's, sorry, sorry, go for it.
We, we also, we, we have a short meeting with the high school representative last Friday, when Peter's not there, the meeting is very effective.
Wait.
It's a joke.
That's good, pal.
Are you listening?
You tell.
So it just, yeah, it's, it's just very brief, so we basically talk about what we mostly talk about at this meeting, which is the calendar conversation before this, before the finance budget come on the, become something that we mainly talk about at this meeting. So I just shared with the, the student representative about the calendar conversation, and they are going to send out a survey, I, I think the survey is already sent out by the high school principal to all the high school students and the teachers, to ask them for some feedbacks on how they want regarding holidays off, and what are some of the, the holidays they see as important or they celebrate, and how do they think that the day should be classified as a full day off, or maybe is, should it be, like, how, how do we want the, the school calendar to look like in the future, to be honest? And we also talk about how it might affect the, the whole school year because of the, the teacher, teachers' contract, and we, we're, we're thinking about ways of how to incorporate the students and teachers' voice, but also the community members' voice in the future discussion of the school calendar. So the suggestion of what we have brought up before at this table for creating a task force for the school calendar conversation over the summer, or maybe at the beginning of the next school year, so we have that in our conversation as well, so the, the students are aware of all the major topics that we are discussing right here. Because our meetings do get very long, so it's hard for people to just listen on, on the busy schedule. So moving on is that we, since we talk about school calendar, and then in two thousand twenty-five, we'll have the stu, the teacher contracts renewal, so we were saying how this can be all related into negotiating the days for, of the teacher's contract, and how do they relate it to the school calendar. And it, it might also related to how we can also negotiate the professional development days that Peter, you mentioned earlier, right? So those are all in the conversation, and, yeah, it, just basically, these are the key points, and we talk about how the, the school budget conversation had been one of the important topics that we talk about right here, and encourage them to talk to their family members, and attend meetings, and have their voice heard, and that's pretty much it. So the next meeting is the first week of April, on April fifth, so we are trying to keep the momentum going and get the students involved in the whole process.
Thank you so much for that, for doing that meeting and bringing us the report. Do, do the students intend in the meantime, or maybe following that next meeting, to, would, would they like to come back?
Yes.
Here to these meetings?
Most likely, because the survey sent out, so we were going to collect feedbacks from, have results from the survey. So they wanted to look at that first, process it within the, within the small group that we have, and then they will decide, we will decide together like how to bring it back to the full school committee. Yeah. Any other questions?
That's great. That's good. Thank you so much. So, okay, I'm sorry, I almost skipped over that, so we are, though, to the next meeting now, so I know we'll have the evaluation, we'll have a finance, we'll have the policy second readings, will we have other subcommittee reports, school building, facilities?
I'd like to do literacy.
That, is that the curriculum update that we have?
Yeah.
Okay, literacy presentation, that's great.
From March twentieth.
March twentieth.
Yeah, we have facilities on the twentieth, so that's definitely, school building, maybe. I think we're still trying to.
Trying to figure out a time.
Trying to schedule, we can at least provide an update on the two remaining engagement sessions, PTO sessions, but we might not meet.
Okay, great. Okay, so, I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second, okay? All in favor? Thanks, everybody.